That's what they're doing, yeah.
This is gonna, this is gonna be the explosion. First of all, this is gonna-
There's a chair, right here. No, I just get right here.
She brought her own chair.
I'm fine. I use it a lot. Hi, Jerry.
We got some more chairs here.
Oh, I can do this.
Can I stand over there?
I'd like to ask if we could change the venue and go into the county building since there's so many people. In consideration of the residents of this county that they can have chairs to sit in during a meeting. I hope our taxes can cover chairs.
Is that an empty seat over there?
Yes, it is.
Can I take that if anyone else wants it?
If you would take my seat, somebody else could.
That's up, that's up.
No, you stay still. I'll go back this way. Sit down.
You sit here.
Go ahead, you sit down.
I'll make an order. Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Time of a board meeting.
Excuse me.
Item number four. I'll make a motion to approve it, hon. February 22nd.
I'll second that.
Questions or comments?
Question. For the first time in I don't know how long, make that about four and a half years, there's public comment for that meeting. Why? There's a public meeting every two weeks.
Yeah.
Why did this one deserve special attention and not the others? You're the head commissioner.
I was gonna tell you what's here today. Today, there's public comment listed. There's always been public comment. We always ask if there's questions or comments.
Yes, I have a question. Why don't you know?
Why do I know what happened years ago? I have no idea.
And you have never inquired since that time?
Well, I just got on board in January. So before January, I don't know what the excuses were, why they weren't done, how it was done.
So in the last six to seven months-
Last of six, seven months.
-you haven't inquired.
Last of six, seven months, at every one of these meetings, we ask if anybody has any questions or comments, so we did prefer.
You haven't inquired.
Yes.
May I ask, Mary Ann, have you inquired?
What was the question, sir?
Pardon?
What was the question?
You don't know the question.
Have I inquired what?
Why there's a change in policy about not having comments in the minutes.
I think the public comments have been the same over the last four years, any to this administration. They have not changed.
Yeah, well, the question is, why? Why was there a change?
Excuse me, sir. We're talking about this item here, and if we want to, we will have a place for additional public comment at the end, so we can address your questions.
Right, that's fine.
Any other questions on this motion? All in favor?
Yes.
Extinge?
Yes.
Two extinctions? Item five. It's the pleasure of the board.
Motion to adopt item number five as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. Questions or comments?
Yes, I wanna know why? Have you read the contract? Why are you going to relinquish your fiduciary responsibility to these people? And why are you gonna change from a consultant whose fees were based on the entire portfolio, switch it back to where we were when we lost eight million dollars? Because now the fees are gonna be based on the asset allocation, which is gonna favor the money managers and the consultant fees, because they can, now you're relinquishing, I can't even believe you're even considering this, relinquishing that responsibility, allowing Brinker to go ahead and move monies around so it suits them. We also have a fee for a third party who's termed a solicitor's designated something or another, which is like a middleman, so you're paying additional fees there. You're going to allow them to be able to move those monies around, and when they move those monies around, you're giving them the permission to move them where it makes money for them, so it's gonna increase the fee. So I don't see what you're gaining here, except that you're putting us back in the position where we were when we lost eight million dollars in the pension fund. I just don't understand, I don't understand it. I don't agree with any of it. The contract is just plain wrong.
Commissioner Jean Greco made a motion. You want any response to that?
Somebody here in the left, I don't think this has, we don't pick Reliance, we do that on the advice of Brinker. Is anybody from Brinker here? You wanna address that?
Sure. May I stand?
Yes.
My name is Tom Wilson. I'm the managing director of the institutional.
How do you do? I finally meet you.
Well, we actually met at a meeting back in 2010.
Two, three years ago? Yeah.
But I apologize if I'm like that. So we do not have the ability to move monies around. We only move those monies around within the context of your investment policy statement as it's written today. So your investment policy statement has targets and ranges for equities, fixed income, et cetera, and so forth. So within those targets and ranges, we'll apply to the investments and to the investment policy statement. As far as the question about fees, we do analysis of the fees that would be charged underneath our recommendation versus what your current provider. Actually, we provide analysis to the retirement committee that shows the fees are actually less than what you're currently being charged.
And it's just a rebalancing of the fees. You're giving us lower fees here and higher fees here. You're basically not giving us anything better. Plus, the way I'm reading this, it says, "Accept this letter of instruction to Brinker Capital the discretion to rebalance assets between our investment advisory accounts." Well, absolutely not. I wanna know what's being moved. I wanna be told, and that way I'm maintaining my fiduciary responsibility. I have not worked for this county for 20 years, saving these people money, to see this happen to us again. This is exactly what happened with Lesko Finance and Glenn Wood and the eight million dollars that just kind of funneled out of the whole fund, because they were moving monies around and making fees where it shouldn't have been. I just don't agree with any of it. Nothing personal. I'm sure you're just a very fine company. I just don't agree with any of your contract language or anything that's being done here. I strongly object to that.
The concept of allowing us discretion on the portfolio would allow us to tweak portfolio in the context of investment policy statement. We would, of course, keep the appropriate parties involved, changes that be made within the portfolio, whether it's an increase or a decrease to a certain asset allocation or a change of an individual manager, so you could say embrace and keep in touch with the portfolio and fulfill your fiduciary responsibility.
And then let me ask, who filled out the investment questionnaire? And who thought it was acceptable to have a loss to the portfolio once in every five years? I don't find that acceptable. I don't know about anybody else.
Well, the questionnaire ties into your investment policy statement, which ties-
Excuse me, I wasn't talking to you.
Okay, sorry.
Who filled out the investment questionnaire? I never saw it.
Everybody did it with help from him, is what I believe.
I believe so.
Yeah.
And when exactly did this happen?
Months ago.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't get any help from him. I didn't see any questionnaire. This is deja vu. This is deja vu for me. I've been through this already.
Not wanna do this?
So Marshall Isley is the current corporate trustee and pain agent on the plan. We've talked to several different pain agents, corporate trustees. They were not willing to give Brinker Capital the same deal that they've given your current provider, so we went out and searched for a new corporate trustee for the plan. The basis of that search, we came up with a recommendation for Reliance Trust. Reliance Trust is one of the largest independent providers of trustee services in the country, over a hundred billion in assets.
How much?
Over a hundred billion in assets under administration, 22,000 plans across the country, and we did a pro forma cost analysis of what you're currently being charged versus what you'd be charged going forward, and we found that the plan would save approximately forty-three hundred dollars, and that's a per year number with the same service.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but I just, I have worked too hard here to see this happen to us again. Not only that, we have a perfectly good investment with Skybridge, where it's not costing us anything, because they're refunding us all the transaction fees, and it's making at least eight percent of a return. And now you're not going to allow us to keep that investment, you want us to cash that in. And to begin with, why would you possibly terminate a consultant who has consistently made you money over the past 10 years? Why would you do that? I don't understand it. It doesn't make sense to me. This doesn't make sense to me.
Mr. Wilson, could I ask you a question?
Please.
It's my understanding that Brinker may pay a portion of its fee to solicitor as disclosed in the disclosure statement previously furnished to the client for solicitor's referral of client to Brinker Solicitor, and the solicitor is also responsible for obtaining financial information from the client consulting with the client. So we have extra fees with a solicitor through this also? Is that-
Well, the fees that, thank you for the question. For the fees that we are originally discussing, it's encompassed in those fees. When we first began the search process and being interviewed by the committee, one of the items that came out was a desire for better service, better understanding of your investments, and in our 25 years of experience, what we have found is that the best way to get a good client experience is to have local representation. So we created alliance with Peoples Bank, which are right here in your community.
People's neighborhood?
Pardon?
People's Neighborhood Bank.
Yes, thank you. Right here in your community, so that if there was questions where you needed somebody to be here immediately, you had that representation as a service provider. It does not alter the total fee that Brinker is charging the plan.
Well, I think her question is, it sounds like, and I was gonna ask like Gladys did, with this solicitor fee, a solicitor to me is an attorney. But you're paying an attorney, and we don't know who, and-
We do know who, because if you read it, it's Bill Lewis in the actual advisor.
But he's not an attorney, that's my question.
He was designated.
Is that a poor choice of words? A solicitor to me is an attorney, so when I read that, you were going to hire some other attorney that we were gonna have to pay an extra fee to?
Right.
I didn't understand it when I read it, so I was gonna ask the question if she did that.
Yeah, the term solicitor is not necessarily an attorney or CPA. The term solicitor-
Well, a solicitor is an attorney.
Well, in the context of that investment advisor-
It is not, is what you're telling me.
Right. It's defined in there as an introduced agent. The purpose of this, I mean, rolling back the legalese, the purpose of that relationship would be the form of a relationship manager to your portfolio, so that if you needed, again, immediate attention, immediate service, questions that you have about the market, questions that you specifically have about the plan, you have local feet on the ground to answer that. In addition, we would be here as well, but clearly, we're in Pennsylvania, but we're not here in Montrose.
Well, I don't believe that was an issue, because we had perfect communication with the former people. I don't know about these people, but-
This is not an additional-
They talk to me every, at least two or three times a week. We're in constant communication.
Well, I don't think we answered the question.
I am not, yeah.
Is this an additional fee on top of those fees that we've been through for a year now, in addition to what you said it would cost us?
No, this is Brinker taking part of its fee and paying out.
That's between you and whoever then. It's got nothing to do with us.
It increases the total fee, so the total advisory fee is already more than what we were paying our former consultants.
Well, that's not true.
Yes, it is true.
That I know.
Yes, it is true. Not only that, they've also included in there for the smaller accounts, that rather than the .64, it's .9.
You wanna address that?
Well, sure. So minus, in reading the way your current fees work, when you look at the investment advisor, investment manager, custodian bank, a corporate trustee, the plan's fees come out to be 1.16%. The basis of this comment comes from a statement from your current provider that dates to 2010 at the time. If you were to do an apples-to-apples comparison, I have it written here, the Brinker fee with all parties included, that comes in to be about approximately 90 basis points. Brinker Capital does not retain all of those 90 basis points. Some of those are fees that are embedded in the ETFs or mutual funds. They're just, you're paying them even though you can't see them, but they're there, but we wanted to disclose that, a fair disclosure. That also includes the payment for individual sub-account managers, as well as payment to the custodian bank as well. So on an apples-to-apples basis, it is a reduction in total fees that is currently being charged by the plan, charged to the plan.
However, in the contract, it's allowing you to move monies around, and based on the asset allocation, the fees, it says right in the contract, you can raise your fees. So it's not a firm fixed price. It's not like our former consultant who had a breakdown of what the fees are, and those fees don't change.
Do you have comments on that? I'm glad you brought that out. So the contract reads that the fee can change, so should assets rise over time, which is what we would hope, the fee would automatically trend down. The benefit of larger asset size is that you should get a lower fee over time. So that's why the language is in the contract that way.
Well, it's gonna depend on the asset alloc, on what type of asset that it is.
Fees over time. And then the other aspect of that is, on a quarterly basis, we provide what's referred to as an vice of debit. It's a very clear picture of what the fees are being charged. So if the, transparency, if the committee sees fees going up, that obviously creates discussion and so forth, but the intention of that language is to allow an automatic fee break as assets unimaged rise.
I don't know why you would terminate a company that was doing a good job.
I don't understand it.
For something that's unknown.
He explained it, I understand, and that's what I thought it was, because that's all basically, all of them were. And the hetero doesn't-
When it's tied to the asset.
So who chooses when they should be increased, and are we, is it identified with us when they're increased?
Well, on a quarterly basis, you would get the vice of debit. So you'd see that in black and white, here's what the fee is that's being charged.
You have a Securities and Exchange Commission rule that requires you by law to disclose every penny.
Well, and now the new legislation, the 408B, requires that retirement plans have full disclosure. We're in the past, it was maybe hidden a little bit.
Transplant hidden in, which has always been a problem. They've always been hidden, nobody ever really knew who was getting paid what and from who, but they changed that, where now it's required by law. You can't tuck and hide all these little fees to different providers. They gotta be out in the open, so we don't have to go through 50 pieces of paper to try and figure out who's getting paid what, and whether we are being charged what we're supposed to. Am I correct?
That's exactly correct.
And our former consultant did that. They broke out the fees and they gave us what the fees were. My other question is, yeah, take it easy there, Mike. This agreement shall be construed according to the laws of the state of Georgia, except to the extent superseded by ERISA or any other federal law. What about the Pennsylvania law that controls the pension?
Is this the Marshall and Isley contract we're talking about, or not your fiduciary bank?
So that-
These were kind of-
We're on the Marshall and Isley trust.
So that's referencing the contract with Reliance Trust. By way of background, all retirement plan assets need to be held in a trust form. You have decision as a committee to be self-trustee or trustee-directed. It is best practices to have a trustee-directed. Reliance Trust is based out of Atlanta, Georgia, so that's where their dominoes are.
I understand that. Where does the Pennsylvania law that controls the pension, the whole pension plan, where does that fit in here? I see Georgia's law and I see ERISA, and we're actually not under ERISA. We are under the Pennsylvania state law. So I have some serious concerns about this. I don't understand that. I don't know why it sat on the solicitor's desk for three weeks before we had a chance to see any of this, which gave us like barely a week, and just one of these is 29 pages long. I just think, I don't wanna see this happen again. I've been through it already. I don't wanna see it happen again.
Got any additional comments about the PA state law?
Admittedly, that's a technical detail of PA versus Georgia, that I'm just getting this question now, so I can't, I can speculate, but I'd like to know for certain if you can answer that question. My understanding is that agreement is the same standard agreement that applies to the 22,000 other plans throughout the country.
But are they municipal plans?
Oh, yeah. Are all 22,000 municipal? No. Do they have other municipal plans? Absolutely.
In Pennsylvania?
Yes.
You are governed by the Pennsylvania pension law.
They do have plans, and they have plans where they act as the corporate trustee with the assets custody that fit out.
So are you, any questions?
No.
Kathy, any more questions?
I got a lot more questions.
I've got a few questions too, but I'd like to table this for two more weeks. You're on the retirement board, too? I personally would like to table this for two weeks. If that's what everybody wants to do.
Do you have more questions you wanna ask?
Yeah, but I don't have them defined right now. I do, I do have more questions, but-
Well, we'll table it.
Okay, I'll second that. Thank you.
Motion to table. Motion to table is gonna be for five, six, seven, eight, and nine.
We're gonna table the whole issue, but we can't move forward on the others if we have one outstanding.
That's correct.
Table five through nine, that's your motion?
That's my question.
Yes.
And I'll second that, please.
That's your second. Any questions on the motion to table? All in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
This time, any public comment related to the retirement board?
I would like to speak to the commissioners, please. Ma'am. Just to let down myself and Mary Ann, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rich Mackey. I serve with the Sussbrenner County Extension Board for Penn State, and I just do have one question for the commissioners today.
Is it in regards to the retirement board, or is it for the general commissioners' meeting?
It's for the general commissioners' meeting.
Okay, we'll have public comment in the general commissioners' meeting.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Any other public comment in regards to the retirement board? Yes.
My name is Bruce Pascoe for the record, just in case this rises to the level of official testimony and is included in the public comment section. I personally would like to thank Treasurer Benedict for being a strong advocate for the citizens and taxpayers of this county. Thank you.
Any other comments related to retirement?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to close retirement board and open salary board.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. Close the salary board. All in favor?
Aye.
Salary board is now open. Followed meeting to order. All members are present. Item three.
Motion to approve item number three.
I'll second that.
Item number three by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any public comment on the salary board?
Motion to close salary board, open the commissioners' meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners' meeting is now open. All commissioners are present. Item three.
Motion to approve item number three. It's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren. Approve item number three. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have the years of service file? At this time, we have some years of service recognition. Jeremy Bogdanovich, 911, five years. He's not here. Sharon DePue, Commissioner's office, 15 years. We have John Bensco, so conservation, with 20 years. We have Evelyn Goff, agricultural extension, 30 years. Item five.
I'll make a-
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to ratify or approve the following cash disbursements listed on the agenda, please.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the cash and electronic transfers. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number six, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve the following seminar request as so stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to table number seven, please.
Number 20.
Number seven.
Motion to table item seven on the agenda by Commissioner-
Yes, seven on the second.
Commissioner Jean Greco, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number eight, it's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve item eight by Commissioner Jean Greco, signed by Commissioner Warren to increase the cremation authorization fee from $15 to $25. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item nine.
I'll make a motion to approve number nine, as listed on your agenda regarding children and youth services.
Item nine, we got a motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to approve the purchase service agreement between Susquehanna County Services for Children and Youth in Concern, Fleetwood. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 10. It's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve item 10. Authorize the purchase of service agreement between Susquehanna County Services for Children and Youth and County of Tioga Wellsboro. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
What?
Motion to approve item number 11. It's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to approve the authorization signed grant for computer services, government software services, the tax claim collection software package for $900 per month for software and maintenance. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 12.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 12. It's listed on your agenda.
Yep, second.
First by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco. Sign the service purchase agreement between Susquehanna County Services for Children and Youth, Smith, CPA, and Shop. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 13. It's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to accept item 13. The acceptance with regret by President Judge Count Simmons, resignation of Marissa McAndrew. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 14.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 14. As listed on your agenda. Do we know how long Edward is going to have stock?
Long time.
They didn't tell me anything.
It's a long time.
Can we look that up, please? Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to acknowledge acceptance with regret by President Judge Count Simmons' resignation of Edward Martin. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 15. It's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to accept the Susquehanna County Conservation District Director Paulie Fallon resignation. Questions or comments? Yes.
Why is it a verbal resignation as opposed to a written one? What does that mean?
It was verbally instead of written.
Don't you have to have written also? No?
No. It's verbal. Recorded in a minute. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 16.
Make a motion to approve item number 16. As listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco, hiring by Treasurer Kathy Bendick, Marion Donahue, Sharon Stockton, and Mary Little Warren for temporary part-time non-uni clerical positions. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item number 17. It's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren, hiring Sarah Tiffany Montrose for the open part-time temporary non-uni position tax claim clerical. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Item 18.
I'll make a motion to approve number item 18. It's listed on your agenda, listing the following items to authorize sales.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, second by Commissioner Jean Greco to authorize sales following items associated in item 18. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 19.
Motion to approve item number 19. It's listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Item 19. Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, second by Commissioner Warren to appoint Brian Sivik, Demac Township to the Susquehanna County Conservation District Board of Flower Director. Questions or comments?
I have one. The term actually is through December 2013. It's not through 2012. And were there any other candidates for this position?
Were there any candidates as a position?
As a former director?
That have served on as associate directors longer? That have served longer? I don't think it had anything to do with serving longer. Brian had shown an interest immediately that he wanted to fill one of the positions.
No one else did?
As a former director? I think maybe Kathy Shelley, maybe about four days later.
And she's been an associate director longer and was overlooked?
I don't think she was overlooked.
No.
She didn't show an interest immediately.
Any other questions?
Well, how immediate do you have to show interest?
Well, I sent out an email to everyone and asked for input as if they were considered, if they would like to be involved. And Brian, there's not a timeframe, but Brian has stepped up to the plate and participated in our CNG as a representative. He's very active. And Kathy works on our education part of the Conservation District.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just one, any public comment?
Can I make a public comment, please? I apologize for not being correct from the timeframe before.
No, that's fine. Please go ahead.
As I said earlier, my name's Rich Mackey. I'm with the Susquehanna County Penn State Extension Board. And I have a question for the commissioners regarding the future of Penn's extension in Susquehanna County. Given that the commissioners, I'm not here to judge your decision-making or your rights to hire, fire, retain people at all. But, you know, given that you have decided to lay off the two extension support staff effective December 31st, and in your letter to those staff, you indicated that the program was not going to be continued, and also knowing in light that you have not yet reached any kind of agreement with Penn State in terms of replacing our 4H educator in the county. And I've heard indirectly that there may not be funding for the line item within Penn State Extension for this coming year. I respectfully would like to ask the commissioners' perspective on where they see Penn State Extension and the services that are being offered to our 4H youth in this county and through the Master Garden Program and through all the other programs that Extension has offered throughout the years, and where do you see that moving forward within the county?
Do you have any comments there?
What, can I, can I, I'll tell you what I think. I believe that the 4H extension, all these 4H kids, all the instructors, and the program may, needs to stay where it is. I don't think there's any dispute, at least what I believe is, there's any issue about whether Penn State's going to stay here. We want Penn State to stay here. We want the 4H program to stay here, and we want all those programs to stay here. The issue that has arisen is, and this has come up in the past, and you hit the nail on the head, Penn State Extension. There has always been a controversy, an issue over county employees. Who directs them? Who tells them what to do under the law versus should they be Penn State? And I think the only thing that was trying to get accomplished here and still trying to get accomplished is, everybody stays where they are, but the under Penn State within the county, with the county participating in some way with Penn State, either through, excuse me, either through funding or the housing, wherever they are, and you just changed the name. Because, you know, we're getting, the federal government's cutting our funding, the state's cutting our funding, everything, state, and throwing it back on the taxpayers' lap. The issue has been forever with the soil and conservation. Who runs those employees? Who controls them? And that's how this came along, this Penn State issue. I don't think anybody intends, I can tell you this, and I think nobody intends to cut the 4H program or any of the Penn State Extension facilities there.
Can I, can I-
Mr. Chairman.
Well, wait a minute, wait until he's done.
Commissioner.
Yeah.
Can I ask then, I understand that there's been some strained communication between Penn State and lack of-
Apparently, we found that out here.
Okay. I would very much like to be able to facilitate a meeting with the commissioners between the senior leadership from Penn State, and I'm not talking just the district officer here, but with the senior leadership at Penn State and the executive committee of your Extension Board. And I would ask the commissioners indulgent in that and to try and meet with them and work out how the county can continue to support, okay, the extension operation within the county and work with Penn State to meet everyone's needs within that. Because I'm a passionate believer in 4H. I really am, and in the program that go on, that they provide for our kids. I've been with 4H. Personally, I've been a 4H leader for 18 years. And I know there's many people who today who have been 4H leaders, and we are desperate. We really love this program, and it's of value to our children, and we want to see it continue.
But I think we all agree with you. And we agree with you.
The letter that was sent to the staff-
Wait a minute, Jim, let him finish.
Jim, I'm trying, and I know you, I'll give you, let you have your piece, Jim.
You want to make this worse than it is, you can do that.
But I really do want to work with the board, with the commissioners, and our board and the Penn State officials. And I will, I will work to facilitate that very shortly, within the next, even several weeks, if that, if the commissioners are willing to do so.
Who's this Dr. Hanson that-
That I spoke with yesterday?
Bob Hanson is the current district director of the new four-county operational district. But I want, I really, and I'll be straightforward, I don't think there's been, he's been entirely supported from his operation and his in either in terms of what he needs to have support from Penn State. So we do want to get the senior leadership from Penn State involved. We will contact directly, Dr. McPherson and Calvin, his last name escapes me, but, and I'll try and facilitate a meeting that we can really work something out for the betterment of the folks of our county and extension.
And you know, I thought that I misconstrued or anything-
Exactly.
I appreciate that.
We were just eliminating county positions. That's it, not, it didn't have anything to do with eliminating anything else.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next.
Jim, Jim, Jim.
The letter that was sent to the staff indicated that you were going to terminate the Penn State Extension program. I didn't understand exactly what that program was. Does that just mean 4H or those staff?
I don't think that's-
It just addressed it with him.
It meant the county program. If I worded that badly, that would have been my fault. But it was, it meant the county program, and I explained that to Kim and Evy, and I explained it to Dr. Hanson yesterday in detail.
I think we just explained that, this gentleman, you were quite clear on it.
Thank you.
Are you comfortable with our explanation?
I'm comfortable with that, yes, I am.
End of story.
And I will be working towards it.
Why, then what was the purpose of eliminating the county employees from this program? I mean, if you take and undercut-
And who are you?
I'm Dr. Mike Kavalewski. I'm a 4H leader. I'm president of the Heart and Care Board, and my wife is the county extension agent here. And for full disclosure, but what was the purpose of eliminating those two employees? If you cut the support staff from the program, where does that leave the program?
Can we just explain that to him?
We didn't.
No, you didn't.
No.
I'm sorry, you didn't.
You didn't. All you said is that it's very important to you and you want Penn State to support it, but how do you, how can it go on if you eliminate the county support for it?
Correct, ma'am.
I don't think we were eliminating county support. We were looking to get the employees that are not under county departments, under the right departments, and to support those, to give some support toward those salaries and benefits. We're not, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's what I understood you said.
But that's a transfer, Dan. A transfer.
It is not, yeah, it's not to have-
But it's not terminate, it's transfer, my way of looking at that.
No, excuse me, it is to terminate as a county employee and to have Penn State pick up and ask support through Penn State.
I think we need more clarification on that.
Well, I think his issue is it was a kind of a poor choice of words, kind of harsher than it should have been with what the real intent of everybody was. Is that what you're trying to do? And you want to know what? Looking back at it, I don't know, as I disagree with you to some extent, but it is going to change.
Yeah, we understand that. But we wanted to say is a transfer with an agreement between you and Penn State, not to eliminate the program.
Oh, not to eliminate the program.
That's the words we want to see.
Oh, my gosh.
You're not eliminating the program. You're going to staff it to some extent with help between Penn State and that and yourselves.
That is absolutely correct, sir.
And that's what we're looking for.
And I think we have that as part of the record today's discussion, and that's satisfactory for me.
Hi, Colleen Fallon, Susquehanna County Farm Zero and Pennsylvania Farm Zero. At the June 27th meeting, you eliminated the NRCS coordinator without knowing that her job was going to be picked up by NRCS, which thankfully, from what I hear, it's going to be. But you eliminated that position at the county level without seeing the value of that and what she does for ag land preservation. And now this month, you are doing the same thing to 4H and the extension with enforcing, trying to force another agency to pick up the funding because you don't see the value of this.
Well, that's-
Do you have an MOU in place right now that someone else is going to pick up this, the funding for this position?
Which position are you talking about?
The Office Manager and Secretary for Extension. Do you have an MOU in place before you terminate this, these positions?
No, we have six months to work on that with Penn State.
That's what we're doing.
And what if no one else picks up the funding for this?
We're going to support, there will be support to Penn State.
Let me, I jump in here because I really do try to be, you know, respectful of everybody's position here. They are, and correct me if I'm wrong, commissioners, but they're understanding, the basic point, as I understand it, is you want Penn State to hold those positions. But you will and are quite willing to supply financial resources to them to help them pay for those positions, in a contribution, if you will, some sort of a contribution to Penn State, and they would be, but they would be the managers of the roles.
Yes.
Okay. And while we don't have-
What?
Equal to what you're doing now or substantially less?
We don't know. That's what we need to talk particularly about.
Well, I'm, I see myself as a facilitator, okay? I am, I do serve as the Extension Board President at the current time, and I will work to arrange this meeting and try and get something to happen between your office and the leadership from Penn State. And we do have contacts down there, and we will work to make that happen. Because I think, because Penn State has made a commitment to this county as well. I heard it many times before the retirement of the most recent director, that at least they were going to keep a 4H, at a minimum, they were going to keep a 4H presence in this county. And that's my goal, and that's what we're going to, I'm going to work towards seeing it happen. And I want to work with commissioners, and I want to work with Penn State leadership to try and make, to make sure that happens.
What other agencies are you looking at eliminating from the county employees?
Other agencies?
Well, yes.
There are no other agencies?
You're doing the same thing you did with NRCS and-
Right, there are no other agencies that we have employees working for that I know of right now. The only two agencies that we had employees that, or county employees that reported other individuals outside the county were those two.
Are there any other county employee jobs that you're looking at eliminating?
Well, I think as responsible commissioners, we always have to be looking at, you know, the county overhead as far as the number of positions we have, and those positions still need to be maintained, or if we need to increase in positions other areas, decrease certain areas, we always have to look at that.
Well, in the view of the sunshine, sunshine law, are we privileged to that information as to what other jobs you're looking at eliminating?
Well, I think I just answered that. I think we have to look at everything.
So at this time, there are no other cuts that will be made?
We're not looking at any other- We're not looking at any other cuts right now.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask you, a lot of us didn't know you were going to eliminate this employee job. I represent the Jim Barber local government in the Farm Bureau, and I met with Mona Green last Saturday, Sunday, and they all questioned this. And three of our board members for the conservation have resigned because of this. So I just wonder why you're doing it.
Well, I, I, and I'll explain-
We're having, we're having a board meeting Thursday night, which is morning, and I'm supposed to ask an answer as long as Jim, I imagine, and so we'd like to know, because we represent local government.
Well, I think the answer to that, and I'll, and I'll be glad to answer that, we've looked at positions that do not report to, to county supervisors, that report outside the county, that are basically part of separate organizations, that should have been from day one part of those organizations, but because of whoever before us made an agreement to have the county accept all the risk and liability and all the future pension costs, those individuals somehow got on the county payroll. Real simple, as I said, is when you look at the, the exposure to the county taxpayers for those positions, they are not county positions where those individuals work directly for the county, they work for somebody else, and so those positions have been looked at.
Excuse me, Marlene Bailey was a county employee until the, the county commissioners cut her funding, she was 100% funded by the county, and at one point, you cut her funding to 50%, and they had to look elsewhere for funding, and then you totally eliminated the funding, and they looked elsewhere. It was 100% funded through NRCS and Chesapeake Bay, and did not, so she was a county employee, and I know that was before you came on the board. She was a county employee, and this, and the county commissioners eliminated her as one, before they eliminated the program. Now, one of the things she did was ag land preservation. Are you going to continue to fund that program?
Something we have to work through, Jim Gardner, to make sure that things still continue?
Is that a yes?
We have to look at it. I mean, I can't speak for the other two commissioners, but we have to look at it to see what we can do to make sure programs continue.
I'm going to say yes.
Thank you.
We have, while there is no money in admin money to be distributed to pay for someone, someone is going to have to pick that up, there would have been no admin money to pay for anybody, so that means somebody else has to pick that up. There is money being distributed through the budget, I understand, to go toward ag land preservation, but not admin money, that has been eliminated, so.
But you're getting your funding anyway, I mean, it was, I mean, it, the county checkbook was washed, the money came from Chesapeake Bay and NRCS anyway, and went right back-
But that's not true, you keep saying it's a wash, it's not true. When you have a county employee working for another agency, and yes, they may be giving you all the money for the, for the, for the salary today and for their benefit package today, but when that individual retires, they're not paying for that individual anymore, the county taxpayers are paying for that individual.
She was already in the retirement.
No, the retirement pool only lasts for a number of years of what was contributed, but when you hire another person to replace her, when she retires, the money coming in is paying for that employee, not the one that's already retired or the two before that.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, it sounds like it's treading very closely on age discrimination that they've been with the county too long.
No, it has to do with, with people working for other agencies other than the county, and it has to do with the county defined pension plan. That's what it has to do with.
County plan is a defined, huh?
Defined benefit.
It's a defined benefit plan. It's the same one that's every place across the United States is going bankrupt.
Because of the defined benefit plan, they were a plan for disaster.
Yes.
I'm sorry, you, you can call it whatever you want, but to me and to I'm sure a lot of other people in this room, it sounds like you're getting rid of them before they cost you too much money. That's exactly what it sounds like, I, I'm hearing yes back here.
Well, wasn't most of her pay coming from the state and federal government?
All of it.
What comes for her, but see, you've missed what I've said. What is being paid today covers her cost today, doesn't cover the cost in the future, and when an employee retires, they're in a defined plan, and that plan continues to pay. They're not paying for that, so if you have three people retire from that position, you've got all those additional costs that are not being covered by that plan. But the bottom line here is that individual is working for that agency, they're not over here working for this agency, they're not under the direct supervision of somebody right here. They're under the direct supervision of some, of another agency. And they understand that, because when we talk to them about it, they say, yeah, we understand, they're part, they're working for us.
Alan, could I ask him the theory line too? What was your thoughts on it?
I would rather, well.
You don't want to get-
I don't need to bring that kind of feeling up in a meeting such as this, I'll take it up with Mr. Allen on my own and let him know what my feelings were.
Well, maybe Jim, you have any question?
Not at the moment.
Yes?
I'm Kathy Rosakowski, I was a schoolteacher at Elk Lake for 27 years, my kids were involved in the 4-H program for years, and I just want to say, I think it's a shame that, that we're cutting those two women, they did an excellent job for the county, I don't understand why you bought a separate house if that cost so much money, and those women were more valuable to the program than them going into a separate expensive house. I, I think it's a shame for Michelle Kowalski, who does an excellent job in our county, to have to pick up the slack and do all extra work, which she is trying to do, and eventually we'll probably just run her out of the county, and she's a good person, I hate to lose her, so.
Did you hear what we explained to him? To the Penn State gentlemen?
Yeah, you're going to try to get somebody to fill in, but how about Kim?
I hope it's those two, I mean-
I hope so too, because they did an excellent job.
We explained this to him, that's, so what you're saying is not correct, we agree with what you say. What do we have to do to make the point?
Why is it incorrect then if I said it right? What I said was all correct, I believe.
Well, no, you said we're terminating, like we're going to get rid of them, like they're not, that is not our intention, never was.
Well, that's what I want to know.
But we explained that to him.
You gave him a date of their departure. I mean, the people have so-
Follow me in order, one person at a time, you want to speak, you raise your hand. Yes?
I'm Evy Goff, receiving my 30 years, and I can't tell you satisfaction that I have received for working for cooperative extension, particularly the 4-H program, and I would ask, did your commissioners see the letters that were handed to Kim and I? Did you read the letters? Did you read the letters?
I did not, I did not.
If you had read the letters, you would understand the upset here. It did say we're being terminated. Thank you. I don't know that I could read, did you read it?
Just hand it to-
Okay.
No, the true that was.
State's termination.
If we had been able to sit down with the commissioners, as we're just telling you now, ahead of this and discussing it, we would avoid all this.
You might be right.
Well, why couldn't we have done that? You know, my paycheck is not near as important to me as our program. I have seen thousands of kids go through the 4-H program, and they've become successful people, like Dr. Kowalewski, and many other people who stand here, and we could have avoided so much.
Read it, please.
Everyone of us is for it, raise your hand.
To our commissioners. That's all.
Thank you.
Yes?
We're not in 4-H, but I, after listening to all this, I just have to say, you guys handled this really poorly. If they just got a letter of termination and nobody ever discussed this concept that you were transitioning their positions from county positions to potentially Penn State positions, is that what you're doing, that's what it sounds like to me?
Well, and I believe that that was happening, I believe-
But it wasn't handled that way, and that, you deserve, you, you, they, they deserve an apology from you, they deserve an apology from you for handling this very poorly in terms of communication, and that's all I'm saying. And the other thing I'm saying is, I didn't hear any guarantee of funding for those positions to Penn State, I heard that it's not a termination, it's a transition, it's no longer county, but it's going to be picked up by Penn State, but it sounded to me like that's only if the county agrees to fund those positions in whole or in part, and I didn't hear any kind of a guarantee, I just heard, oh, yeah, well, you know, kick some money in the bucket. But that's not the same, is that what you're looking for, is an agreement?
Well, I under, I, and, I under, I understood the commissioners to say, and I take them at their word, okay, that they are going to participate financially in supporting the extension program within Susquehanna County.
That's correct.
And we are going to work with the leadership from Penn State and commissioners to establish what is, the exact specifics of that relationship. I, obviously, I didn't hear, you, you, nobody commits what, a fixed dollar amount, okay? I'm not, I'm not expecting that at this point, but I am expecting, and I have heard that, that you got, they are going to contribute, and that'll be something that I think will worked out between Penn State and the commissioners, and, and with hopefully the executive committee of the extension board will be part of that, and we'll try to make sure that works, because we all have, we, everyone in this community, everyone in this room, and, you know, obviously, I appreciate you all being here, because there's a lot of 4-H employees here, and so to support Evy, to support the program, because it's great to see that the county really values this program, and I, you're really supporting this, and I know the commissioners are going to be supportive and work with us if we get to where we need to be.
Gene Hubbard's my name, I live down in Dimmock, and grew up right over here on the hill, on the Comstock farm, and I do 4-H program, my kids are in 4-H, my parents were both 4-H leaders, I'm also involved with the Hartford Fair as one of the directors, and we have a very close association at the fair with 4-H. And I think today's group of people is probably evidence on a short notice, after these letters went out to, to very valued employees, on short notice, there's a fair amount of people here that are probably, one, were a little confused, not knowing what's going on, and your answers today have not been, they've been rather nebulous, and that's okay, I mean, that's fine, I, we can't hold you to, to actions on, based on a few words today. I know you have to think about it, and you got to get some details worked out with Penn State, and hopefully we can pull that together and make it happen. But I think our, our little group of folks here today is, is really representative of how a lot of people in the county feel concerning these two programs, and, and I, I would hope in your minds that this little show of support on short notice is representative of how a lot of the people in the county feel, and you take that into account as you move forward on working, working out the details of what our program's going to look like in the future.
Anything else? I just, one of the, one of the resignations was not accepted with regret, and I'm wondering why, and that's Colleen Fallon, it seems like she did an excellent job, she served the county, and why aren't we accepting that with regret?
If you would like me to speak on my resignation, I, I felt as though the program at conservation was being undermined, and I'll just leave that at that.
Well, I'll answer, I'll answer that, am I, do I, am I sorry to see that Colleen's left that? Yes, I am, I think she does a great job, and I was hoping that she wouldn't resign, and I was hoping she would stay. I, you know, I realize that, you know, emotions run high, and sometimes people resign or say they're going to resign because of how the emotion is at the time, but, you know, I'm a firm believer that if you believe in something, that you stick with it, and I'm sorry that it's gotten to the point where, where she feels she can't stick with it, but I'm definitely going to miss her from the program, I think she's a valuable asset to it.
My concern is that on the official agenda item, she's not accepted with regret, and we've run into situations in the past where people were not, their resignations were not accepted with regret, and it leaves just ill will in the community, so is there a way to amend that officially? Do we accept her resignation with regret?
Sure. It's right the way it was, it's going on the, I don't know why you think it's there with, with regret.
I think there were two, two in the past, no, there were two in the past that were accepted that way also.
Did I make the motion? Was that the motion, one of the motions that I was on? I'm happy to amend the motion to accept it with regret.
Yeah, just a minute, please, just a minute. Just a minute, please.
Well, all the agendas gone because mine doesn't have any of the right numbers.
Yeah, I don't have the right number.
Item fifteen.
I'm missing a few motions.
I have fifteen.
Item fifteen.
Yeah, you can tell me that all you want, but I have one, five and two, prior to the last one that happened.
And, and I'm going to find out.
Oh, you didn't say what one came in? No.
Okay. I'll get you one.
Okay.
Michael, you made a motion under it.
Was it an issue, is it? Was it the same?
Yes.
I don't remember what it was.
Yes.
So, questions, do you want to amend your motion?
Oh, medical field, you don't want to second it?
Well, well, would you like me to bring up why?
Hey, you can bring anything you want up here, I don't care.
I will.
I mean, I don't want this, this-
I don't, when Tom Helmsley and Bill Lord resigned, theirs were accepted without regret also, and-
I do, I don't remember that.
And, well, I do remember that, and I just want to say that there were things said here as to why, and I think the same thing was said here behind closed doors as to why. So now that we have an audience, why are we changing?
Maybe I'm tired to say something, wanted to say something.
Somebody brought it up.
I'm, I'm sorry, but, but if you, I understand that, but, but what's right is right, and if you say something behind closed doors, and then you don't say it, you change it because somebody says something to you, is it really meaningful?
Probably not, but I didn't believe it was an issue.
But I mean, the way it's worded amongst the other resignations, it just sounds like a delicious entree.
Believe it the way it is.
Do you want to amend your motion?
No.
Next question, any other comment?
Can you differentiate between public comment and official testimony?
No, we've been down this a hundred times, we're not doing, we're not doing it anymore, we're done with the issue, it's done.
Well, I have, when I have, okay, indulge me for a few minutes, I have, I have the floor, sir, excuse me.
No.
I have the floor.
I'm still the chair, so-
And I'm asking you a question.
And I'm still the chair, and I am telling you now, you can speak.
Right, so you're not going to give me a definition that's established? Would, would someone speaking about the millage rate in the county, would that be public comment or official testimony?
Anything that happens here is public comment.
Would someone speaking about changes in the county budget, would that be recorded in public comment, or is that just talk?
It's just public comment.
Would someone, would a commissioner who talks about the fiscal shape of the county, would that be just public comment and not recorded, or would that be official testimony?
Depends on whether it was in a motion or not.
No, it's just, just within the meeting.
Then it's just public comment.
And would the following be public comment or official testimony? Commissioner Warren states that the new commissioners will be sworn in on Monday, January 7th, 2008, at 8:30 a.m. Would that be public comment, or would that be official testimony? Those are the last recorded public comments in four and a half years, and at the very next meeting in January, January 2008, without any motion in the agenda, public comment in the minutes ceased to exist. And I want this board to reinstate it as, as the past practice was, and I don't understand why you won't, it is not difficult. And I have one more question, is anything said here today by these folks attending a public meeting going to be recorded as official testimony, public comment, whatever you call it, in the minutes for the, that we get in two weeks? Is that going to be recorded in the minutes?
No. Any other comment?
Well, there it is, folks.
Well, first, I'd like, Tom Helmsley wanted to say something there. He back off again? Well, and the other thing, Mr. Green's meeting Sunday, County Green, they wanted to know if you were going to go to the recycling plant, some of them are there.
if you were gonna close the recycling plant, someone was hurt. Are we closing it? No, we can't close the recycling plant. Nobody said it was for sale. There's never been any action by this commission to put it in the paper for sale, or to take and, um, have a motion to put it for sale. Thank you. Okay, any other comment?
Can I just say one more thing? When the commissioners are talking with Penn State officials about how to go forward with funding these two positions for cooperative extension, please, I implore you to consider those two positions, yes, they may work for Penn State and answer to Penn State, but they serve the people of this county, okay? And if the taxpayers of this county need to pay for their retirement, I don't find any reason why they should not. For 30 years, Evie Goff has worked for this county, providing support to Penn State Cooperative Extension. And I just implore you to please keep open minds, to make sure that we have support staff here to keep these two programs running. Going forward.
Absolutely.
If, even if Penn State, we all know their financial situation with the budget is not good, and for, to expect them to come and add two more employees, I think is pie in the sky almost, okay? The counties need to support extension, and it needs to happen in order for this program to continue. And I, I ask you all to keep open minds with these meetings going forward, to make sure that that continues to happen. Thank you.
Any other comment? Yes?
I'd like to know, like, even this gentleman, when he spoke, is that considered public comment or testimony?
I think we've been through this enough.
No, you haven't, you haven't, I haven't.
The word's too big for you, I mean, the answer is.
That's insulting, that's insulting!
Please, please.
We've answered this question, time.
Yet to give a definition, sir.
Then what is, what is public, what is public testimony? Give the definition to the public, what is testimony?
Yes.
No.
I have a question. The last meeting, somebody in the crowd had asked if you'd been to visit the people that may have water that's undrinkable, and you were, you had indicated that this appears in litigation, you were not visiting those people. When was empathy from the public servant subject to litigation? You've got a lawyer here, is, is, can you be sued for being apathetic?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Can you answer that question?
Have I been to places that have had gas industry work done? Yes, I have.
No, bad, bad water. That's not the question.
Have I been to those specific people? No, I have not.
So where is your empathy and your concern and support?
I have empathy for them, I feel bad for the situations that they're all in.
So what can you do? Can you advocate for them?
We talked about that last meeting. Any other question?
And none of it's recorded?
Um, I've been asking this question everywhere, my township supervisors, the DEP, there's well pads being permitted all around me, there's, um, this Constitution pipeline, which I'm certain you've heard about, 30-inch high-pressure pipeline, which is gonna be 2,000 feet behind my home, or my neighbor's property, according to the pre-file with FERC, the maps that they submitted for the planned route. And FERC doesn't really typically reject any of those plans, especially since everything's, compressor stations and gathering lines are being permitted along that route now in Pennsylvania, so it will be, I know it's not till 2015, but here's my question, and here's what I've been trying to find out. In 2004, I watched my neighbor's house burn down to the ground, while every fire, volunteer fire truck, and EMT, and people from townships over were lining my street on Hall Road in New Milford, up and down the driveways, lights flashing, and all they could do was stand there and watch the house burn down. They don't have resources, they're all volunteers. I've been asking this question of the township supervisors, what are we doing to beef up our emergency management plans? And then I realized it's in your job description. It's the county supervisors, the county commissioners, who part of your job description is emergency management. And the New Milford township supervisor said, it's you guys that have to make the plans. And I personally don't want to wait until after catastrophe hits, because we are at such a significantly increased risk of catastrophe. With everything that's going on around us, we need to have training, we need to have facilities, we need to have funding, and that shouldn't come out of your impact fees, because that's supposed to be a benefit to you, not a necessity because of the damage they're causing, okay? So, I, I'm not sure how this gets done, but what are you planning? What are your plans to have people alerted in the event that there is an evacuation required, an immediate evacuation? How do we know that when we're at home and not watching the television? Are there sirens? What are the county plans for emergencies? I think every resident of this county needs that information. Am I wrong?
No, you're right.
Thank you. Oh, wait, I have one more thing, one, one more addition to that, is that this 30-inch pipeline affects everybody from Brooklyn to the state line, the New York state line, because it's 22.7 mile pipeline. And I know this, because I'm very computer, I spend my days on the computer, okay? I have not seen this advertised anywhere. They, the Constitution Pipeline Company is having a public open house at the summit in New Milford on Tuesday, the 17th. This is the only meeting that's planned for Susquehanna County, for all of Susquehanna County, so that people here can learn about it, they can ask questions. I went out and put up flyers yesterday, I printed these out so people could know about it and attend, because none of my neighbors knew, and they all live on the route. The high consequence area for this 30-inch pipeline in a county like, let's say, Chester County with lots of people, is two square miles, that's considered their high consequence area, two square miles of the pipeline. Here, in our class one neighborhoods, where we get no regulation and no oversight, our risk is significantly increased. But yet, we don't have the emergency planning, we don't have, our homeowners isn't gonna cover it if the house burns down. I kind of think that if, if, in the event of an explosion, we'll all be toast anyway within two miles. But we need emergency procedures. The most disturbing thing I heard was from a local EMT in New Milford, they were at a meeting that was given by the industry that was called training. It was like preparedness training, but it wasn't really training, it was an expensive dinner. I was told by her, who, she attended the meeting, she said, when somebody asked, what do we do in the event of an emergency, they, they were told, we don't want any of your local people to show up, we'll handle it. You know, when your, your EMTs, stay away, if it's a pipeline, if it's a well pad, if it's a compressor station, stay away. And somebody said, well, what if there's people hurt? How do we help them? We'll bring the bodies to you, is what they were told. And that's because the industry doesn't want press, they don't want people to know the truth, because that way, everybody can't continue to believe that everything's hunky dory, okay? And there's no danger. So we need to talk about this as a community, and we need to ask questions, and we need to get some answers.
Any other comment on emergency services, first?
I, I would just like to comment on the county emergency, um, the EOP. We do have an emergency operation plan, a county-wide plan, that was put together in our emergency services, um, department, and that was put together with the cooperation of emergency services from each township and borough.
I don't, who's funding it? Where's the funding coming from? Taxpayers, the industry, the state, where's the funding coming from?
There's no funding coming into Susquehanna County from the industry, it's coming from the taxpayers, it comes out of our general fund to, to, to do our emergency operation plan. And there were, and there was grant money also, they've brought in a consultant to help.
So whatever we do in this county to improve our emergency situation, for instance, provide every fire department with the required foam, so that they can more quickly quit out a gas fire.
We actually have, um, Charlene worked on a grant to get a foam truck and to get all kinds of things that's going to be stationed, I think, right here at the United Fire Company for all of the emergency services.
But whatever you can't get with grants has to come out of taxpayer funding. And even though it's the industry that is putting us at this greater risk, and it's because of their activities, we're not getting it, where's our benefit? The taxpayers, whether you have land or not, whether you're getting royalties or not, whether you're, I don't care who you are, you have to pay, because these people come in and put you at significantly greater risk, and no federal agency and no state agency will even regulate their activities, because we're class one. How does that work? How does that happen?
I think it's fine understanding, and you might be able to comment on this, that the, the trailer, the foam truck or trailer, um, was agmonated by Williams.
The gas companies have, I'm like a fifth-generation firefighter, been in United Fire Company for a number of years. They have been working with us closely on what we can do when there is an emergency. We've gone to trainings, we've gone to tours to see how things work. We've got new, they've given us new equipment, they've given us.
Where are you on the?
United.
United.
AKA Montrose.
Montrose, okay. Are you paid, or are you volunteer?
No, we're all volunteer.
Right, well, what about having the paid professionals? I mean, in class two, three, and four areas, they have paid fire people. You know, they have poor population, maybe somebody can petition to have the industry pay for a fire department, for emergency management, paid personnel who are able to respond, instead of just having the industry people tell locals to stay away, because they don't want press, our people will.
Well, I don't think it's stay away because they don't want press, it's stay away, they're, this is their lifestyle and their industry, so they know how to handle the stuff that they're causing, yes.
That's what they tell you, that's right.
They know how to handle it. So would I, would I like to go charge in them there? No, if I don't know what's going on personally, I don't want to risk my crew myself.
Which is why we need local outside of the industry people to be trained, we need training as part of that emergency.
They're gonna be on site anyway, they're right there.
You know, you can't just rely on the industry to make all their own decisions, regulate all their own facilities, provide all of your emergency management services. You cannot do that and expect that you're gonna be okay. I'm sorry, I wouldn't go to the tobacco industry and say, help me out here, I think I'm feeling a little ill, is it because of your cigarettes? No. You can't do that, you have to be involved as a community. That's all I'm saying, I'm done.
Any other comment?
Do the gas companies provide a copy of their emergency management plan to? Yes, they're on file over in Emergency Services.
Oh, how about your emergency plan? Where can I find a copy of that?
Across the street in Emergency Services.
It's not online anywhere? Is it documented online?
It's, um, 500 pages or something like that, I don't think it is online. And, and it, I don't think it's, I don't think it's online, because there are things in there that cannot be disclosed, is. Terrorist information.
Oh, okay. Where, will you say, over there?
Um, across the street in the county office building, the first door on the left, Emergency Services.
Any other comment?
Craig Stevens, Silver Lake Township. Okay, so once again, we heard it earlier, what is public comment and what is testimony?